I am. Took me years to build those relationships, so...
Nobody's gonna ruin them. You're too old now. Who gives a shit?
I do. Sad that Bob Link is losing it.
Everybody looking for just a lot of good rumors.
It's the second time.
You seem pretty good to me, you know, right?
I'm not ready. I'm the chair. We're not gonna start till I'm ready.
Where's the grand jury?
Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of July 22nd, 2020. Please stand with me and dislute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands.
Good morning. Now is the time for the public to comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to participate in public comment via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You will be connected to the boardroom to address the Planning Commission the same manner as if you were here in person. Please state your name, address for the record, in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live audio stream and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. This meeting can be viewed at the Planning Commission meetings at Tullary County main page website. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration, so that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing Planning Commission may leave at the discretion of the chair. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. As a courtesy to those in attendance, please turn off and place your cellphones on compliance, I mean on the alert mode. In compliance with the American Disability Act, if you need special assistance to participate at this meeting, please contact Resource Management Agency at 559-624-7000. So is there anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, I will close the public comment.
No, you did not.
What's next? I'm mixing it up today. Approve the minutes, we'll have roll call.
Mick Elroy?
Here.
Millie?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Diaz?
Here.
Latch?
Here.
Pearson?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here.
Just for the record, that means we have all commissioners in attendance, not including the one vacant space. Guys didn't get it. We have one vacant.
Alternate.
Alternate.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the minutes for our last meeting. Do I have a motion?
Are we doing buttons? I'm motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second?
Yes.
I did Millie's.
You gotta touch it. The mouse doesn't work.
Does everybody touch the screen? Okay, we have one abstention. Okay. So motion carried. Moving right along. Item four, parcel map public hearing. All actions on parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing. Unless anyone wishes to discuss any one of these items, request that it be pulled for a separate hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case... Thank you. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items, but there is only one, so it's just one item today. To members of public, if you wish to participate in the public hearing via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You will be connected to the boardroom to address the Planning Commission the same manner as if you were here in person. If you choose not to call in, you can also participate by submitting an email as this item is being heard. Emails should include the sender's name, address for the record. Emails include the following agenda item and can be sent to the clerk of the Planning Commission at all lowercase planningcommission@co.tullary.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comment into the record, but some comments may not be made due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing is closed will be made part of the record if received before the end of the meetings. This includes the instructions for today's public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing on 4A. Attendant of parcel map PM 20-016 Enrique and Arella Medina. Forster Weber is their contact. Attendant of parcel map PPM 20016 to divide 5.73 acres on APM 333-430025 into three parcels. Parcel one, 1.94 acres. Parcel two, 1.91 acres. Parcel three, 1.88 acres, with the exception for cul-de-sac length and a file map required. Their property will be located in our aim 12.5 rural residential, supposed to mobile home park, 12,500 square foot minimum zone, inside Allensworth Hamlet Development Boundary. And April Hill is our staff person, but there is no staff report today. So I'm going to op... I've opened the public... I'm opening the public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward or comment? Or is there anybody listening online that would like to comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and go to my fellow commissioners for a motion to approve or disapprove. Delayed reaction here. Waiting for a motion. Somebody make a motion. Oh, second, okay. I wasn't paying attention. Second. Vote. Motion carried. Okay. Moving on to item five, 5A. The public hearing to the members of public, if you wish to participate in today's public hearing via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You will be connected to the boardroom to address the Planning Commission the same manner as if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live on audio stream and be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The timer will be set three minutes. This is for your comments, so please adhere to the time limit. If you choose not to call in, you may also participate by submitting an email as this item is being heard. Emails should include sender's name, address for the records. Emails should include the following subject. Agenda number, which is five, can be sent to the clerk of Planning Commission at lowercase planningcommission@co.tullary.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comment into the record, but some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing is closed will be made part of the record if received before the end of the meeting. That concludes the instructions for today's public hearing. So this is 5A, 2020 Transportation and Circulation Amendment, Vehicle Miles Travel Guidelines, SB 743 Implementation and Complete Street Policy, AB 1358, General Plan Amendment, GPA 20-003, 2020 Transportation Circulation Element Amendment, Vehicle Miles Travel Guide, SB 743 Implementation, and Complete Street Policies, AB 1358. Tullary County Board of Supervisors, the Proposed 2020 Task Transportation and Circulation Element Amendment, and et cetera, et cetera. We'll go to Dave Bryant.
Chairman Whitlatch, members of the commission, Dave Bryant, Chief Planner, Special Projects with Tullary County RMA. Presented of...
Dave, is that not true? Aren't you retiring today? So you won't be the chief planner tomorrow, but it's true today.
It's the next Thursday at 5:00 PM.
Okay, I'll call you chief then.
Yes, for another week, yeah. Presented for your consideration this morning is the Proposed 2020 Transportation and Circulation Element Amendment for Vehicle Miles Traveled pursuant to SB 743 and Complete Streets Policy pursuant to AB 1358. I will provide an overview of both of those processes, including staff recommendation as part of my presentation. At the conclusion of my presentation, we have our consultant who prepared the Vehicle Miles Travel Guidelines, Eric Rohr from VRPA Technologies. He is the Director of Transportation and Traffic Engineering for VRPA and is our professional engineer and consultant on the project. Before I start my presentation, I would like to acknowledge the efforts of Hector Guerra and Aaron Bach, who did most of the heavy lifting on the Vehicle Miles Travel Guidelines, working in conjunction with our consultant. The request for your consideration today is an amendment, again, GPA 20-003, which includes an addendum Environmental Impact Report, finding of consistency, tearing off of the General Plan 2030 update that was adopted in 2012, and the General Plan Amendment Proposed 2020 Transportation and Circulation Element Amendment for Vehicle Miles Traveled and Complete Streets Policy. The Vehicle Miles Traveled would establish Tullary County Vehicle Miles Travel Guidelines for the implementation of SB 743, and the Proposed Complete Streets Policy will build on the existing adopted Complete Streets plans that have been previously adopted either independently or as part of community plans and formalize that existing structure and future Complete Streets framework through the inclusion of Complete Streets within the Tullary County General Plan Transportation and Circulation Element. In regards to the finding of consistency for the SEQA analysis, the Addendum EIR, as supported by the analysis presented in this document, the SB 743 guidelines would not result in any new or substantially greater significant environmental effects or require any new mitigation measures that were not previously identified in the Tullary County General Plan 2030 update. The program EIR can be used in compliance with SEQA to address the effects of a subsequent activity, so long as that activity is within the scope of the project covered by the program EIR and no new effects are found and no new mitigation measures would be required. For Vehicle Miles Travel Guidelines, again, the purpose is to meet the requirements of SB 743 that were adopted into SEQA in December 2018 and go into effect this year, 2020, to provide for transportation improvements to be built that benefit Tullary County residents and facilitate travel by walking, biking, and transit, to provide for analysis and mitigation of VMT impacts in a way that is feasible and within the scale of land development projects in Tullary County to reduce vehicle miles traveled through the county, thereby positively affecting air quality and greenhouse gas reduction, to help improve the circulation and transit systems within the community, including but not limited to laying the groundwork for the construction of key projects such as safe routes to schools, complete streets, and bike lanes and pedestrian paths. For complete streets, it is expected that the community planning areas will be improved for the following reasons: to design and implement a multimodal transportation system that will serve for travel demand, minimize congestion, and address future growth; to provide safe and convenient pedestrian access between residential neighborhoods, parks, open space, and schools that service those neighborhoods; ensure the provision of adequate off-street parking; provide a transportation system that's integrated within the region; encourage the use of public transit services to reduce reliance on the automobile; provide efficient good movements; provide safe and convenient facilities for non-motorized modes of transportation that enhance the future liability and character of unincorporated communities. Key points in regards to the Vehicle Miles Traveled, and again, at the conclusion of my presentation, our consultant, Eric Rohr, will go into additional details that are presented here. VMT refers to the amount and distance of automobile travel attributable to a project. The term automobile refers to an on-road passenger vehicle, specifically cars and light trucks. The Governor's Office of Planning and Research recommends use of VMT per capita and VMT per employee significance thresholds to reduce impacts to levels that are below appropriate existing averages. OPR recommends determining the project VMT per capita or VMT per employee and comparing it to regional and/or citywide averages. It is important to note that the VMT analysis, as described in these guidelines, only applies to passenger travel and not goods movement. Trips related to the movement of goods for agriculture or industrial purposes would not be subject to a VMT analysis and would be considered to have less than a significant impact on the transportation system. Significance thresholds for land development projects are summarized as residential projects, office projects, regional retail projects, and industrial projects. In regards to VMT mitigation, the preferred method of mitigation is for projects, project applicants to provide transportation improvements that facilitate travel by walking, bicycling, or transit, and this can be accomplished in several ways. A survey would be conducted within one-half mile of a project to determine any gaps in facilities for walking, biking, or transit. If suitable improvements are not found within the vicinity of the project, improvements could be suggested in more distant or remote locations that would support walking, bicycling, and transit in other unincorporated areas of the county. As listed in Appendix F of the proposed guidelines, based on the TCAG Regional Active Transportation Plan, which can be consulted for potential projects that could be used for mitigation as well. In order to provide for VMT mitigation, it's proposed the cost of mitigation provided should exceed either $20 per average daily trip or 0.5% of the total construction cost of the project, not including land acquisition. The $20 value per average daily trip is based generally on the typical statewide minimum roadway mitigation value of $2,000 per single-family dwelling unit and an assumption that transit, bicycling, and walking can make up approximately 1% of all trips in Tullary County. The value of 0.5% of construction cost is meant to roughly be equivalent to this value but expressed in dollar equivalents. If a project provides mitigation that meets either or both of the VMT mitigation costs as described above, it can presume a 1% reduction in VMT for reporting purposes. The goal of this mitigation is that it will be sufficient to reduce a project's vehicle miles traveled impacts to a level of insignificance. In regards to complete streets, the adopted Tullary County General Plan and Circulation Element includes policies that support a balanced multimodal transportation network, including policies that support the development of active transportation, such as bicycle and pedestrian facilities, but does not specifically include the term "complete streets" in the policy section of that element. Beginning in the fall of 2013 through funding from TCAG and intensive community outreach, staff has worked diligently to complete 16 complete streets programs with 26 roadways designed for 30% projects. Six programs were approved through the community plan updating process. Nine were approved independently. In recent plans, including Three Rivers and Lemon Cove, which were recently adopted, also included complete streets policies and recommended projects. The Proposed Complete Streets Policy will build on the existing adopted Complete Streets plans and formalize the existing and future Complete Streets framework through inclusion in the Tullary County General Plan Transportation and Circulation Element. Recommendations for your consideration this morning to the Board of Supervisors is for the certification and adoption of the Addendum Environmental Impact Report under SEQA and mitigation monitoring and reporting program proposed in the 2020 Transportation and Circulation Element Amendment Vehicle Miles Travel Guidelines, SB 743 Implementation, Complete Streets Policy, AB 1358, and the adoption of General Plan Amendment 20-003 for the Proposed 2020 Transportation and Circulation Element Amendment Vehicle Miles Travel Guidelines, SB 743 Implementation and Complete Streets Policy, AB 1358. That concludes my presentation, and as I mentioned, I think Velma will connect Eric for the next part of this presentation.
Yes, we'll have the call come through right now.
On that $20 per family? So that's supposed to be the cost per day per family for the streets, or what does that $20 represent?
All of it. If you save that question for Eric when he comes up, I think he can. He's the expert and I'll turn that over to him.
Real quick, Dave, if you could turn it back to that slide.
Yes.
So it's $20 value per average daily trip is based on typical statewide minimum roadway mitigation value of $2,000 per single-family dwelling unit. So the $20 per average daily trip, right. So you are correct. And it's, you know, most houses can generate between six and nine at peak, so it gets you to that $2,000.
Well, that's gonna be the... the $2,000's gonna be...
Well, we'll give you some more detail. I mean, that's the basis of the valuation, but when Eric talks a little bit more about the thresholds, the thresholds are gonna begin at 500 trips. So you'll be exceeding that significance threshold at 500 trips. So then we'll start talking about the mitigation. The mitigation is just the valuation. When we are, as Dave stated, we've also put complete streets in our general plan, which we couldn't back in 2012 because we were getting challenged already and we didn't want to add more. We'd rather just not have things in there. But 2011 state law was to do complete streets in general plans. So now we've fulfilled that obligation, and that neatly ties together the money that's gonna be used here would go towards actual complete street projects. So it's not necessary... So the valuation itself is just a means to plunk money onto these projects if you exceed that 500-trip threshold. And as you hear pretty consistently, there's many projects in this county that don't... Most projects here don't exceed the 100-trip threshold we have for level of service, much less the 500-trip threshold. And Eric will also explain that this is based on transportation analysis zones. So you take your census block and you split it up and you project at the TCAG level how many trips are coming out of each one of these to get to your TASs. So before, even after we figure if it's 500 trips, they're gonna have to exceed whatever the minimum TAS projection it was. Start calculating how much more, I think we were... If they're within 15% of the TAS, then they'll start projecting out how much more above that 15% goes into the calculus to get to the $20 per average daily trip. So it's... I know the concerns that this Planning Commission has voiced previously about the impact fees. Again, we don't have impact fees in this county. And what we're suggesting here is that the... You would pay a fair share for a project, but to give it an amount, this is the calculus we're using. So it'd be a rare situation, because again, goods movement, I mean, our biggest projects in this county are usually the use permits for, you know, for cold storage facilities or packing houses. Those are our largest projects typically. Goods movement itself will be accepted from that. So I mean, you're talking about the employees' vehicle miles traveled trips. So again, it'll be a rarity that one of these projects actually comes to you through an EIR for mitigation, because for the most part, just as far as background studies are, we're well within... we're well within, we won't see the size projects that would require an impact fee or anything like that.
So I'm dealing with home builders and their concern, you know, and you and I have talked about this six months ago, was the cutoff was July 1st.
Right.
Anything after that would possibly incur an assessment or charge of some sort per unit, per housing unit. So is this 2,000, is this just a multiplier? How does the builder know how much he's going to have to pay?
Well, in our, and I'll let Eric answer that question a little bit better. Again, you'll be looking at, again, if you even exceed the threshold, if you exceed the threshold of 500 trips, then you'll be looking at the difference between what that area, that TAZ projected the growth would be in that area, and if you're within 15% of that, then we'll start calculating how many trips that would have been. So...
Does the builder have a matrix of some sort when he starts building a home project, a new home? Does he have some sort of a calculation tool to determine what the vehicle miles traveled?
Yeah, I'll let Eric talk about that. We, what we did just for, and partially because of your concerns, we have three different analysis scenarios that's built into the guidelines that they could use to actually get to that calculus. So their consultant can easily figure out what that's going to be before the project even starts. As early as Project Review Committee, you'd have a pretty good idea of what that's going to be. But again, you know, the, given the 500-trip threshold, I don't foresee too many builders in this, in the county having to actually pay mitigation. And if they do, again, it's going to be for, you know, bicycle, walking, or transit projects within a half mile of the project itself. So it's going to a project and not necessarily an impact fee to the county.
But the 500-trip threshold is for the aggregate of the community they're building?
No, it's the aggregate for the vehicle miles traveled from the, per capita for their, for their project.
For the project.
For the project. Again, haven't seen too many projects exceed our 100-trip threshold, much less a 500-trip threshold. But there'll be mitigation measures regardless for levels of service potentially if there is traffic impact for signalization or something like that. But again, I'd like Eric to explain a little bit more about the, how you get there based on the analysis that he's suggested we would do with each, for each project. Go ahead.
Good morning, Eric. Are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line. Can you hear me okay?
Thank you. You are now connected to the planning commission meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eric Ruer. I work with VRPA Technologies. My address is 9747 Business Park Avenue, Suite 210 in San Diego, California.
So Velma, if you could switch over to the PowerPoint. So Eric, if, we'll proceed through your PowerPoint one more time, and then if you could stick around for some questions from the planning commission, go ahead, Velma and Eric.
Yes, I'm here, and just so you know, I'm now able to be connected to the meeting, and I can see the screen, but there's probably a few second delay, so, but I'll go ahead and, when you tell me to go, I'll go through the presentation.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so once again, I'm Eric Ruer from VRPA Technologies, and I work with county staff to prepare the guidelines for SB 743 implementation that we're talking about this morning, and we can go to the next slide. And I apologize because I'm on a delay, I might be a little bit behind the meeting, but...
Hold on one second.
Here.
Okay.
And I'm going to go to my presentation so I can follow along.
We're on the second slide.
Okay, great. All right, so this may be a little bit pedative from what Dave talked about, but the intent of the SB 743 legislation was to, was to implement new methodologies for transportation impacts under CEQA. It was to promote statewide goals for reducing greenhouse gas emissions and develop multimodal transportation networks and encourage smart growth and infill development. And the legislation stated that the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, or OPR, was to write statewide guidelines for implementation. So we can go to the next slide.
The next slide is up.
And, okay, and so for Tulare County, it, this, this new legislation is not a one-size-fits-all. It's different for the urban coastal cities, the rural areas, the inland cities. Everybody has different characteristics, and this SB 743 will potentially affect people in different ways. So we wanted to tailor our guidelines as to how we're handling this legislation to Tulare County, and our goals were the ones shown on the screen. We wanted to follow state law, CEQA law. We wanted to make positive changes, so we wanted to move in the direction that the state wants us to move. We wanted to provide benefits to Tulare County residents, and also we wanted to provide a reasonable implementation process for land development and transportation projects. So we don't want this to become a burden for land development, economic development, and projects that will be built in the future in Tulare County. And we can go to the next slide. So I said earlier that one-size doesn't fit all. The statewide guidelines are guidelines only, they're not requirements, and each agency under CEQA has the right to determine its own methodologies and thresholds for implementing CEQA technical studies. So basically, this slide just goes through some of the differences in what the state recommends versus what we're recommending for Tulare County. And so the first one there is the smallest size of project that would need to do a VMT analysis. The statewide guidance is 110 average daily trips. That is about 11 single-family homes. We're recommending about 500, we're recommending 500 average daily trips. That's consistent with about 50 single-family homes, and we're doing that to be consistent with other agencies, especially agencies in rural and suburban areas. Our basis for VMT comparison, the state recommends comparisons to either regional or citywide averages depending on the project, and we're recommending that VMT be compared to the traffic analysis zone. So it's the comparison of the project VMT to the traffic analysis zone, which is a geographic area set up by travel demand models. We are recommending use of the statewide model, which is supported by the Office of Planning and Research, and Caltrans for use in VMT analysis. The state recommends the threshold of 15% below average. We're recommending just below average, and that's consistent with other jurisdictions have made that change in what the state recommends versus what the jurisdiction recommends. And then SB 743 also applies to transportation project, and we are recommending that transportation projects be compared to what's already been approved in the circulation element to determine whether it has a VMT impact. Let me go to the next slide. And so finally, what effect does this have on projects? Most large projects will have a relatively small but significant VMT impact. There are quite a number of projects that will have no impact at all and will not require a VMT analysis, and those projects would be anything below 500 average daily trips, goods movement projects, affordable housing projects, and locally serving retail projects. So mostly what you're looking at for a project that would have to do a VMT analysis is a single-family home development of 50 homes or more, or a large office development. So the way that we've structured the analysis and the threshold, projects will have relatively small impact and relatively small mitigation measurements, mitigation requirements will be needed. And so a typical project will be paying for, if it has a VMT impact, will be paying for pedestrian or bicycle improvement in the area of the project. And we've recommended sort of guidelines for what kind of mitigation dollars should be paid, and it turns out to be $20 per single-family dwelling unit or 0.5%, one-half a percent of the construction cost of the project. So we set those targets, and then we're recommending that a project look around its area and provide pedestrian or bicycle improvement that conform to those dollar amounts. And once again, this does only apply to large projects that aren't screened out because of project type.
So Eric, Eric, this is Aaron, no quickly, so if you had a project, let's say of 51 homes, what would the impact, or what would the mitigation costs be?
So 50 homes at $20 a home would be about $1,000 in mitigation costs.
Well, 51, so...
Oh, 51, yeah.
$1,020.
$1,020, yeah. And one other comment about that, Aaron, is that what, since what we're doing is we're interested in providing an actual physical improvement, I would treat that value as somewhat of a minimum. So if I were developing a project of 51 homes and I knew that my target was $1,020, I'd be looking around the area saying, what, you know, what pedestrian improvements, the sidewalk, the curb ramp, maybe a bicycle improvement of some port, that would be, that exceed that value and provide some benefit to the community?
Can't do much for $1,000.
Well, again, the intent here is to, and John could probably talk a little bit later on about, you know, how hard it is to get ATP funding to begin with, but let's say you were to build a 300-home subdivision in early market, and we want to fix Washington, it begins to get the developers to contribute to that so we can put the money in a trust fund for that improvement that we can work with Public Works to say which ATP project. And it almost creates a situation where we are self-mitigating because complete streets are now part of the general plan itself. We are almost mitigating our inability to fund these projects ourselves through using these developer funds. And it is a little bit slower process, but again, the, it's based on the rationals that OPR allows us to use without being overly burdensome to developers, especially in a county that has shown no desire to do impact fees. This is about as close as we can get to mitigating the actual greenhouse gas emissions from these cars. So go ahead, Eric.
And really, that's the end of what I wanted to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Eric. Have a great day. This is Bill Whitlatch.
Okay, you're welcome.
I've seen these green bike lanes all over coastal cities. I think they look kind of ugly personally. Got to come up with a better color or something.
Well, it has to be something relative to transportation. Can't be a pocket park or something like that.
No, it would be relative to the complete streets program. Now, as far as, and this is, again, like you say, all developers want to know what they have to pay before the project starts. So this is the framework by which we would operate. So this is transportation-related, so it would be transportation improvements that would reduce greenhouse gas emissions from cars. I guess you could begin to make some of the more other arguments that parks sequester and maybe if you were to tie this in, but again, that's more negotiation than it is the actual impacts.
You know that project we had over in Goshen that we approved, the Smee Homes?
Mm-hmm.
I think we had a lot of discussion about pocket parks, and we said, well, they're going to drive over the pedestrian overpass to the park on the other side of 99. So here's a good example, and there were quite a few homes in that one, if I recall.
There was a school, a huge school, a play area that made the difference.
Yeah, what Mr. Millies is talking about is the other county, now a county park, across the detention basin that was built for the Betty, for the railroad overpass. That's a park that you could make an argument that they would mitigate, but that, it just sets the monetary value pretty consistent with the state impacts. Again, we don't have large, a lot of large-scale home development projects here, so mostly we have goods, goods movement that is exempt. So when we get to that discussion of projects that are greater than 51 homes, I think we can begin to have that discussion about what the mitigations are going to be, but this does set the thresholds and the framework to begin to have some of those discussions. But again, the park issue, I think, is a standalone issue, and that's, I do want to distinguish that from what we're trying to achieve here with the vehicle miles traveled.
But as I recall, the school was in favor of utilizing their playground.
Yes, yeah. Mr. Washam had that conversation with Icela Unified School District before the planning commission hearing, and they were in favor. They were in favor of more students. So the, because we are losing a lot of the student population in all our schools across the county, so to keep up their ADA numbers, they got to have more people. But again, the conversation here is about the vehicle miles traveled. To try to tie in a sequestration argument or something like that would be a little bit more difficult, but, you know, the, as long as we can create that, and that's the tough part, is creating that nexus, the nexus between the two. Because we're asked to do that all the time for some AHSC and other grants to actually say how much we're sequestering by putting in street trees or drainage ditches with plantings, you know, and at the relatively small numbers. So again, I'd like to keep the focus on the roadway itself.
Well, one thing, if you're going to have funds coming out of this, like in this project in Goshen, and you're going to use the school on the other side of 99, then the funds that would be used for pedestrian or bicycle improvements could be the design of that subdivision to allow a bike path somewhere through that.
Right.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Right. Access to, the access to the parks. And so that's a good example, that's a perfect example, as a matter of fact, because Harvest, Harvest Road is one of our ATP projects, and that connects directly from that subdivision to that school. So if we said, you know, pay for the bike path, pay for some of the sidewalk improvements because we're doing that project right now concurrently, that this is the mechanism to get them to do that.
It would be similar to a golf course where you have a golf cart path, and it goes in between the houses to get from point A to point B. You do the same thing with a pedestrian or bicycle path. You do the same thing with a pedestrian or bicycle path.
And as a part of recent funding from Caltrans, uh, we've received funding to update the Goshen Complete Streets Plan, and so that would be, uh, a, a perfect opportunity, uh, to revisit, uh, the, uh, proposed improvements there, um, in conjunction with, uh, your comments and recommendations.
Dave, you won't be here to help us.
I'll, I'll be there in spirit.
As a consultant. So, uh, if you could go back to the recommendation real fast?
Sure. Uh, it's recommended to your commission, for your consideration, uh, to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, uh, certification and adoption of the Addendum Environmental Impact Report under SEQA and the mitigation and monitoring program, that the proposed 2020 Transportation and Circulation Element Amendment, Vehicle Miles Travel Guidelines, and Complete Streets Policy, and the adoption of General Plan Amendment GPA twenty-dash-zero-zero-three for the proposed 2020 Transportation and Circulation Element Amendment, Vehicle Miles Travel Guidelines pursuant to SB seven forty-three implementation, and Complete Streets Policy pursuant to AB thirteen fifty-eight.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a motion for my fellow commissioners on that recommendation to the Board of Supervisors?
Need to open the public comment.
Yeah, public here.
Oh, yeah, it was just one minor glitch. I'm opening the public comment. Is there anyone liking to comment, or anyone who is listening that would like to comment? I'll give you six, sixty seconds, those who are listening. will close the public comment and move on to my fellow commissioners for a recommendation to approve the Board Supervisors on this action. Anyone like to make that motion? We do have a motion, a second. Roll call. So that, that ends everything except for...
There's two of them, there's two of them.
In motions.
In motions.
Oh, there's two motions, there's a second one. Okay, so we have a motion.
Wayne on Belma here.
Sorry, there you go.
Probably gotta read that one, since he didn't read it, Wayne?
I don't know.
Yes, please read the motion.
Go ahead and, uh, would...
Wayne, you need to read that motion.
I didn't, I still...
Uh, it's five A, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. That the Board of Supervisors adopt the General Plan Amendment, number GPA twenty-dash-zero-zero-three for the proposed 2020 Transportation and Circulation Element Amendment, Vehicle Miles Traveled Guidelines, Vehicle Miles Travel Guidelines, uh, SB seven forty-three implementation and Complete Streets Policy, AB thirteen fifty-eight.
We didn't just vote on that, huh? Okay, do we have a second?
Was that the second motion?
Yeah, Ed did second, and now we're voting.
Okay.
I did.
I think it's warm in here, and we're having trouble staying focused.
It carried.
He's doing very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, don't, don't go anywhere, Dave. We have something for you, I think, next.
Yes, so, um, before I, I get on to talking about, uh, Mr. Bryant here, um, I did want to say, as part of the Director's Report, we did, uh, circulate this, and I've discussed this before, we discuss, we circulate our SB seven forty-three guidelines through Caltrans and TCAG, and even had conversations with both agencies, and they were very, very favorable. Uh, Mr. Smalley said he was gonna get us a letter, uh, so hopefully we get, we get one before we get to the, uh, before we get to the Board of Supervisors. But, um, I, I think, uh, you know, we, we wouldn't get too many more comments about this, um, 'cause even Caltrans, we're supposed to submit some comments to us, but they, we haven't seen anything yet. So, uh, not too worried about other agencies on this. Um, and as Dave said, we did, uh, receive, uh, Caltrans, two-hundred-thousand-dollar Caltrans grant to look at, uh, Complete Streets in regards to access to the ci- from east Teleri Villa in Metheny to the city of Teleri, and from Goshen and west Goshen, access to the, to the city of Isalia. So that was, uh, Dave, uh, was instrumental in, in writing the grant, uh, two years ago, and it, it took a couple of years to get here, but we got that. And on top of that, we got, because TCAG felt so bad, 'cause they helped us the first time, and we didn't get the money, they actually gave us Measure R slash, uh, ATP money for, uh, four additional streets. So now, now we have pretty close to, uh, four-hundred-thousand dollars to, to do additional Complete Streets. And, um, I, I think this is really gonna tie in well in the future, for projects, like Mr. Millies is saying, that we could create the direct connection and the nexus without having impact fees or, uh, a CIP, uh, something tied to the general plan itself, um, in this great, the, we could point to the ATP projects themselves, it's almost like a CIP. So we, we get a little bit closer to nexus, we, we don't have our hand out a lot for development projects. Um, but when it comes to, like, the, um, project we just did for Dunn Sand, um, you know, we're a little bit out on a limb when we're asking money for, uh, roadway impact improvements, when it's just tied to, to SEQA, and there isn't necessarily a, a threshold that's being tripped. You know, so now we're just saying, hey, help us fix, uh, the potholes. Um, so, uh, it comes down project by project, and those, uh, it, it's really tough to ask developers to do that when you can't point to something, but now we can, now we can point to something. So thank you, Dave. And then, uh, after you had a point about that, or?
No, uh, listen, the Board of Commissioners, if you ever see my on the planet, for sure, I can broadcast pretty loud, I'll come up anyway. Um, the other thing about SB seven forty-three is that, uh, that is the new SEQA, you know, metric that we have to use, but we're, we're not gonna get rid of, rid of level of service, we're still gonna keep that. Uh, the important thing to know, too, about SB seven forty-three is that, uh, there's are some exceptions to it, like low-income housing, farmworker housing, they're exempt, they don't have to pay. So that, that's really good. And, uh, we're also, through, you know, working with Mr. Boxer, the director, and Dave is the project manager essentially, and VRPA is our consultant, we're also the first county of the state to do it. You know, everybody else is behind us. We're the only county in the state of California that has adopted now going to the Board SB seven forty-three guidelines. Cities have done it, but no county has done it yet, so...
Hector is a low, is a low...
I don't know who's gonna answer the questions.
Is low-income housing, uh, is exempt, is that right?
Yes, low-income housing.
What's the cri- what is the criteria, the price of the, of the homes, or, or...
I do not know, that's the criteria, the state put it out that way, so whatever the state's criteria is for what they consider low-income housing, I, I do not know that. And then I guess the last thing about, you know what, uh, you talk about, I'll call it the fifty residential unit discount, if you have two-hundred houses, and you have the, the first fifty, doesn't mean that fifty-one through two-hundred are solely responsible for it, you know, the, the best thing to do is say, everybody pays for it, 'cause it's a cumulative thing. So if it were, you know, two-thousand dollars a house, you're looking at three-hundred-thousand dollars for a fee, but you spread that out to all two-hundred, so you're really looking at fifteen-hundred dollars. That's what you gotta do. Now, I don't know, and Johnson might be able to provide some information in the future, uh, what it costs to put in, or pay for part of, or if there's a match available for either ATP or Complete Streets, to say, you know, we have this project we need to do, is three-hundred-thousand enough, or, or does it go to the kitty? You know, we don't know that. The good thing is, similar to air quality, if it benefits the whole county, because greenhouse gases and air quality are region-wide issues, not just to Goshen or Early Mart or whomever, you know, it, it is through the whole county, so that gives us some latitude discretion and say, you know, that's a, that's a really good project, especially since we put in two-hundred new homes or something, or SME, you know, after doing something, but I'm not certain about the, the parks thing, you know, uh, because how does that really reduce vehicle miles travel? Why, you don't have to drive to the park, you know, but, uh, so, that's, that's a difficult one that, that will likely be a test over time. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Is that Crossroads, uh, the Caldwell and Ninety-Nine, the large children's hospital project, are they, are they gonna have to deal with that also? I would assume, right?
Well, if they're in the, uh, city, uh, they'll have to deal with the, the city themselves. Uh, we, we, um, didn't want to get bogged down in what the cities are doing, um, and, uh, we are strictly unincorporated portions of the county.
Dave, come on my back up, you ready?
Right, so, uh, I wanted to use this Director's Report to, uh, give the Planning Commission and, uh, staff an opportunity to, to talk at Dave, uh, and to, uh, give him kudos for his years here. I, um, wanted to, I, I did prepare a, a little bit of a background for Dave, so the Planning Commissioners are well aware of the service he's provided this county, and, uh, over the years, and, uh, gi- give everybody a little bit more, uh, background about who Dave is as a person. Um, Dave was born in Fresno, uh, spent time growing up in Davis and Lindsay, and then moved to Northern California, and specifically Rockland, California. After graduate school, Dave made his way down to San Luis Obispo, where he started his career working for Slocog in nineteen eighty-three. After three years at Slocog, he came here to work for the county in nineteen eighty-six, and has been here ever since. He, he has been with the county for almost thirty-four years.
Aaron, didn't we lose him to the city for a little while, or?
Uh, no.
CAO's office.
The CAO's office. Yeah, I'm gonna go into more detail, don't worry. So, uh, Dave is a proud father of, uh, son Fred and daughter Joanne, and met his wife Lisa at Cal Poly Food Science, a food, Cal Poly Food Science graduate at Cal Poly in nineteen seventy-seven. But before he started his family, he was the standout sprinter in track at Sierra College in Rockland in the mid-nineteen seventies, and he said if he had been more of a standout, he would have probably never had a family and just been a track coach. He had, holds a Bachelor's of Science in City and Regional Planning from my fellow alma mater here from Cal Poly SLO, and a Master's in Public Administration from CSU Stanislas. He started in the county's Transportation Department for Public Works, and moved over to the Planning Department, where he advanced to a Planner Four, where he was in charge of long-range planning. He has worked as a Deputy CAO during the mid-two thousands, and he came back to RMA to complete the two thousand twelve general plan. Throughout this time, he perennially coached his son and daughter's local recreation soccer teams. Go soccer, yep. And, uh, saw them through college at Cal Poly Pomona and San Diego State. You never coached against each other, did you?
I was in Teleri.
All right, good. All right, so, uh, and, um, just so by, by the numbers, uh, Dave started at the county on ten twenty-two nineteen eighty-six. On nine-nine nineteen ninety-eight, he was a Planner Four with RMA. He may have held other positions, but our HR system only goes back to nine-nine nineteen eighty-eight. Um, at one twenty-seven two thousand two, he moved to the CAO's office as a deputy, uh, over programs. In ten seventeen two thousand five, he moved back to RMA as a Planner Four. And three twenty-two two thousand fifteen, he was promoted to Chief Planner over special projects. Over the last five years, because of Dave's, uh, commitment and perseverance, RMA has developed thirty-five community plans, and is currently in the process of updating the general plans, transportation element, and water elements. Uh, as he put it to me, these are only in-the-field doubles he wanted to finish off with, and I'd say they're more like home runs. Dave's legacy will be in the Three Rivers Community Plan, the General Plan Settlement with the city of Porterville, the incorporation of the framework plans through General Plan MOUs that exist with all the cities, 'cause I'm sure Jake Raper didn't do most of that work, I'm sure Da- Dave did. And, uh, uh, the, that's all the cities of Teleri County, the breadth and depth of the general plan policies, and the rezoning of all the communities that Dave meticulously poured over day and night, um, and, uh, Johnson can attest to the many hours he spent, uh, as Dave corrected his own corrections, uh, and, uh, had to, uh, do five or six different versions for every zoning plan. Um, to me, Dave is the truest meaning of an Eagle Scout, and I'm proud to have worked with him over the last eight years. He is the truest Planner's Planner, and the county could not have achieved so much in being in compliance with the general plan, laws of the state of California, and the state policies without him. So I, I do thank Dave for his great service, and, uh, only because of him have we been able to achieve so much.
I thought you were a lot younger than that resume.
So we're, we're gonna have a hard time replacing him, there's no doubt about it.
I'd say it's impossible to replace Dave.
David did, we did coach against each other, didn't we, in soccer?
Uh, probably, I, I would say so.
'Cause our boys are the same age, I believe.
That's right, yes. And some track and field as well.
That's right, yeah.
Did you run in track and field?
Um, uh, believe it or not, I was a sprinter. Uh, people always said, oh, sprinters, you know, they need to be more bulky and husky and muscular. Anyway, I was, I ran the hundred, uh, back in those days, they hadn't converted to meters yet, so I ran the hundred-two-twenty, four-forty relay, uh, mile relay, did some field events, and for fun, after my college days, I, uh, completed, uh, five decathlon's, uh, in a submasters, uh, down at, uh, Long Beach State, uh, to wrap it up, and, uh, then devoted time to my family.
Very good.
Dave is a dedicated family man, we, we just happened to go to the same church, when we were able to go, you would see Dave every Sunday there, uh, with his wife, sometimes some of his children, his mother, or maybe was that your mother-in-law?
Mother-in-law.
Mother-in-law, and, uh, he is a, a dedicated family man, and, uh, you're to be congratulated, especially on the family part, but I've enjoyed working with you, but we'll miss you, but eventually we'll see at church whenever it opens again, okay?
Uh, certainly, yes, and it's, uh, been an honor and a privilege, uh, to, and a pleasure to be associated with your commission over the years. Uh, thank you so very much for your support and guidance, uh, into helping us serve the residents of, uh, Teleri County, and, uh, my accomplishments have been very small, it really truly is a collective effort of everybody in this room, and all the staff, uh, in the county, uh, to promote and adopt our projects. But, uh, thank you again very much for your support and guidance, uh, over the years, and, uh, a lot of fond memories, uh, along the way.
So, uh, before, uh, we don't have an opportunity to have staff, uh, I'd like, uh, staff to come up to say any words about Dave. Chuck?
First time in months. Missioners, uh, just a brief, uh, little presentation, um, about our work with Dave. Um, Chuck Prizabelski from, uh, the Planning Division in Teleri County. And Dave has really made a difference here in Teleri County, and for me personally. I mean, what can I say about his work in Teleri County, his plans, 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 more plans, from community plans, housing plans, general plans, et cetera. Uh, David has always excelled at polishing and polishing and polishing and polishing plans that he's worked on, and long, long, long presentations, uh, and guiding them all the way to the final approval. Uh, Dave was always there, and he's done most of it here at the county, always providing the leadership needed to complete these projects, uh, what a career he's had here at the county. He's definitely made a difference here at Teleri County, and we appreciate everything that he's done for us. He's always had your back, he has infinite patience and perseverance, and he rarely gets angry. Uh, one thing, working with Dave, you always know when he's reviewed your project, uh, there's... There's lots of red lines. He interviewed and hired a relatively young man twenty years ago, and has made a difference to him personally. Yep, Dave hired me all those years ago in the great boss that he's been. It also helped that he's a L.A. Kings hockey fan along the way. Thank you, Dave. You've been a great boss and will be missed, especially at all those long night meetings and presentation, and especially if there's another general plan update within the county. We wish you a respectful and fulfilling retirement, and if you ever do make it and live on the coast again, I'll come and help you celebrate there. Thank you, Dave, and good luck in your retirement.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just because we're on the record, Hector Garrett, chief environmental planner. I've known Dave for over thirty years, and I knew him in my first, what I call, tour of duty from eighty-eight to ninety-one here at Tulare County Planning, when he was with Public Works, and we worked well together then. And, you know, Dave is the planner's planner. You know, I've known many planners in my career. I've been doing it for about thirty-odd years myself. And I look at just his thoroughness, his love of planning, believe it or not, you know. But the thing that fascinates me the most is what Eric had pointed out, the past five years of all of these plans that were done, that is task impossible. I cannot phantom, and people, as a planning commission, you've seen all these plans come forward. It is an insane amount of plans that have come forward. I mean, if you don't do something in five, ten, fifty, twenty years, and Dave and Aaron and the rest of the planning division and your commission knock off all of these plans in five years, that's unheard of. We didn't have a general plan update, a comprehensive one, in forty-nine years or something? Dave gets it done. We hadn't done anything in Three Rivers for a long time, obviously, because the community's very, you know, opinionated, which is great, we love that. Dave receives that. You know, Dave doesn't see it as just pure, straight-out criticism. He takes it and he molds it and he turns it around. He has that capability to win a community over, and that takes patience and perseverance and knowledge. And an amount of knowledge we're gonna lose. I mean, I can't begin to phantom how much knowledge we're going to lose, well, with his history gone from us, but, you know, Dave's a great guy. Dave is what my mother used to call "good people." You know, I've known Dave for so long, obviously Commissioner Whitlash knows him from the church. He is good people, and he will be missed, and I will miss him tremendously, you know, and I'd give him a bro hug if I could, but, you know, I can't. So anyways, I just want you all to know that, you know, as a colleague, as a professional, as an Eagle Scout, you know, as a graduate of Cal Poly, I'm sorry, Cal Poly, Mustang, you know, he's done well here, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Jason?
Jason Garcia-Laboue, planning impermitment manager slash chief planner. I've had the opportunity with Dave. I was hired in two thousand and five, and so he was more of a mentor back then. But in two thousand and fifteen, I got to become a chief with him, and we really had a dynamic team between Aaron, me, Dave, and Hector. And we're losing a quarter of our team, and it's gonna be tough. You will definitely be missed, but thank you so much, Dave. It's been a privilege to work with you and kind of go through and learn different things. On a personal level, you're very much family, part of our planning family. And we've been so busy over the last few years, it's just, it's really tough to say goodbye, but thank you for all your dedication and hard work to this county. If you look at the community plans and look at the development standards and policies and true planning principles that are composed in those, what Aaron and Hector and Dave and our planning division put together, it's pretty amazing, and it will have years of impact. So thank you so much on a personal and professional level, Dave. So again, we'll miss you.
I wanted to piggyback a little bit on the Three Rivers part of this. You know, I've personally monitored the county and its interaction with Three Rivers for the last twenty-five years, being the newspaper out there. And I can say, we have hurled insults and been mean to every single county person at one time or another. Dave was one that was just such a nice guy, we couldn't be effective at doing that.
Tiflon, tiflon Dave.
Bulletproof.
Wonderful to have him out there and his presence in those really volatile meetings at times. So I thank you for that, Dave.
Yeah, thank you again very much for your participation and contributions to the Three Rivers Community Plan. Many times I would, and thank you so much for your kind words. Again, this is an outstanding group of professionals, including your commission, that I've been associated with, and it really makes coming to work every day a pleasure and working with them. Even though I'm stepping aside, you're in very good hands with this staff. All the good things they've said about me, I can certainly say about them. But I would come home late from community meetings, and my wife would always ask me as I came through the door at ten-thirty or eleven at night after driving back, how was the meeting? And inevitably, before the meeting would start, I would be prepared with charts and graphs and figures and tables and maps and plans and zoning proposals, Complete Streets projects. And before the meeting would even start, someone would come up to me and say, what are you going to do about the cow in my neighbor's yard? But inevitably, at the end of the meeting, that same person would come up to me and say, you know, we really appreciate you coming out to our community tonight. Thank you so much for caring, and we appreciate the county having an interest in developing a community plan for us. And just those kind words from the community, knowing how much they appreciate our collective efforts here, made it worthwhile and gave me the energy and enthusiasm to head out to the next community.
We have Mr. Washam on the line.
Yes, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to attend today, but I just wanted to chime in as well regarding Dave. He will be truly missed. He is, he's our backbone in the planning department, and he's, his demeanor and his ability to speak with the public in the, in the, in the community meetings is just a shining example for all of us to try to attain. He's taught me so much personally. He's a good guy, as Hector said, he's a, he's a great guy, and he's gonna be truly missed for the RMA, for sure, and the contributions to the county. I could just replicate all of what the others have said, but without Dave, we would be a step behind, for sure. He's kept us going forward. So I just wanted to mention that.
Mike, let's make him an offer he can't refuse.
I think he's, I think he's ready. The other things that make him a good guy is he's a Dodger fan as well as a Kings fan, so those are the good things. Oh, now I've turned the board on him, huh? But no, it's just a great, he's a great example of really a civil servant. I mean, he's dedicated his life to serving the people of this county, for sure.
What are you doing in retirement, Dave?
Well, my wife and I are very fortunate. We met at Cal Poly in a very romantic place called The Dining Hall. And we are very fortunate. We are planning on moving back to the central coast, hopefully, sometime in the next year, and we're truly blessed for that opportunity. And that is our immediate plans, anyway. We have a few friends from Cal Poly and a couple of friends left over from my days at SlowCog, and we're looking forward to reconnecting with some of those people. But it does not diminish in any way, shape, or form the pleasure, again, that I've had with working and associating with all of you.
Thank you for your service, Dave.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that all of our staff are exceptional. And then when you look at your credentials, it's amazing that Tulare County, we even have you, because you're all well-educated, well-experienced, beyond the minimum requirements. And so not only are you great people, but these qualifications are hard to get people to come to Tulare County with these kind of qualifications. So I thank all of you for all you do for the county of Tulare, and help us, make us planning commissioners look good. So thank you again. God bless you.
So before you depart, Dave, we have some gifts for you. Let me put my mask on, so.
They're all sanitized, right?
What's that?
They're all sanitized.
Sanitizer in the bag.
So, you know, you have to sanitize the bag afterwards. Official retirement papers, very much in need these days. And we thank Velma for this, because she put the stuff together for you guys. So here's your official retirement papers.
About four months ago, that would be like a brick of gold.
Yeah, I know. You just can't overcharge for it. And then Velma and RMA gives you this shirt.
What's that?
Retired since twenty-twenty.
Wow.
Thank you.
And then finally, your name tag. There you go. You can take it with you.
Since, since Aaron's already standing, this might be a good point to say that, well, I haven't known you as long as these other gentlemen, the interactions that we've had, I've come to appreciate. And on the couple of phone calls that we've had on the EJ committee, he's the calmest voice in the room. Everybody's like excited, you forgot this and you forgot that, but Dave's very calm, and you can note that. So what I'd like to offer as a parting gift is a standing ovation for your years of service and for what I've appreciated in the short time that I've known you, so.
Thank you, thank you again so very much. As a kid growing up in Lindsay, if someone had approached me on the playground and said, someday you'll be involved with the Tulare County General Plan, I would've said, well, what's a general plan? And quit bugging me and let me get back to my baseball game. But growing up here in the county for a time, it's really been an honor and a privilege to come back to the county after being away and to serve the residents of the county. Thank you again for all your kind words, and you will definitely be missed as well.
Thank you. So Johnson, did you have anything to report for today, for the director's report?
I have this report, but I didn't want to talk about Dave.
Okay.
This is Johnson with Public Works. I've had the pleasure to work with Dave on the community plans over the few years. I started about four years ago, started working with Dave about three years ago, and it's, early on, it was a challenge, but Dave, really with his open mindness, it really worked out well and we were able to blow through quite a bit of the community plans. But I remember, the reason why I wanted to come up here is really, Dave has really helped me. Earlier on, I worked a lot of hours outside of the forty, because being new out of college, the pressure of catching up with my more senior peers, I worked a lot of hours, and really that stress, talking to Dave really helps really focus on the bigger picture and focusing on the family and not just work. So, and I remember calling to one member one night, Dave, for Three Rivers on that note. I remember staying here till good twelve-one in the morning to get that stuff done. So I will never forget that night, but we did get it done, so. And Mr. Ollie, your comment about Dave being such a nice guy, I want you to know, Dave, that I brag about you to the team all the time, that you are the nicest guy in the county, so. I'll miss you, and really your demeanor and the way you speak to people, you know, I continue to watch you and watch how you communicate, and that's something I almost preach to my team all the time. Really, that, really the customer service that you have is exceptional, and I will, I will miss you greatly.
Thank you.
So that completes the director's report, unless there's any questions for me?
I just have one final comment, and thank you again. This has nothing to do with you, but maybe twenty years ago, we had a project on the Kings River, and our planning commission spent at least four meetings trying to figure it out before it was pointed out to me that this was an entitled project, you know? What they did is they brought in what looked to me like permanent manufactured houses, but somehow they put wheels on them and licensed them and moved them around every so often. And so it qualified this project on the Kings River to be a mobile home, a manufact- no, it was a mobile home park? Recreation vehicle park, that's it.
RV, yeah.
Yeah, and they're still there to this day, and they're still an eyesore, and everyone has their own little septic tank that needs to be pumped. And right after we were advised that basically it was entitled, it still continues on, but there was a flood that year. And all those septic tanks, I was never there, but I suspect they all floated around. It's still there. So the thing we have to remember as a planning commissioner, the point of this is, is that if it is entitled by the law, which the laws are voted on and approved by the supervisors, then we are obligated pretty much to approve it. And so there are fire codes. Our county uses the, I think it's the National Fire Code, that's what we use to, for fire hydrants, for fire protection, for building standards, there's the Universal Building Code. And so what I'm going to ask the staff to do is that maybe we could have, like, the fire department come talk about why we have the codes and where they came from, the Universal Building Code, which is, you know, the city adopts it, so it's standard across the United States, pretty much. And so that sometimes we don't get hung up on asking the fire department whether the laws are fair. These laws are voted in by the supervisors. We're just here to make sure that the laws that are, that are applied according to the law. So in the future, we can schedule those out. I think they'll be interesting for me. I have a lot of building experience, but there's always more that we can learn and make us better planning commissioners.
Yes, staff agrees, and as part of the educational process, we could definitely bring in the outside agencies to speak to the codes, the county code, and any national or state codes that these other agencies who are commenting on our projects and what is the basis for their comments. So yes, we can definitely do that.
When I was first appointed, the county sent me to UC Davis for a new planning commissioners' indoctrination. It was pretty good. And that's when the book by Curtin and two famous lawyers.
Daniel Curtin and? I don't know. Dan Curtin had his own book, but there was also the Sequoia Guidelines, Remy Thomas Moose.
Anyway, that Daniel Curtin book is very good, because it looks at each of, I think there's seven areas of planning, and all of these are built on huge, I mean, you read that book, it's court case, court case, court case. I mean, if you're so moved, you can really research each, each one of those. So anyway, we will have some indoctrination over the next few months. I don't think we have, do we have any big meetings coming up, long ones?
I think most of the, like I was telling you a few months ago, most of our big projects have kind of rolled through here, and what's gonna happen from here on out is gonna be mostly working on the update of the general plan in regards to water. So you start to see a few more workshops versus true, big project meetings.
I can see why you're a lawyer after reading the Curtin book, because it's all based on court cases.
I worked with Dan Curtin as well, so.
Yeah, we actually had his partner come and give a presentation on development several years ago, it was very good. And that's all I have to say. Anything else anybody'd like to add to the record? Beating the jury.